...up for public comment. Seeing none, we will go to the next item. I, may I ask, address it now?
Sure.
Okay, I had asked because when we postponed with a continuing resolution, any action on the budget that it interfered with some vacations that had been long established by two of our council members, and so therefore it's just the three of us tonight. One asked if we could postpone the item tonight, or could he participate through the telephone? Well, he didn't tell everybody quickly enough, so therefore he cannot. So Mike is not able to be able to participate in the meeting without, and we don't want to violate the Brown Act. Eddie has not asked that, but I know he had some concerns about the budget. And so I want us to ask our staff, what is the impact of operating under continuing resolution and what, and how does it affect our budgets?
As you were informed earlier today, the Richcrest jail is closed. I do not believe the intent of the county is to reopen it. If, in this budget, we were requesting to hire two community service officers to be able to mitigate the effects of the closure of the jail. If you don't approve the budget, we can't hire these people. The longer we go, the more significant the impact is on that. So I just need you to, you know, to be aware of that. Because without those positions, we are going to have officers on the road.
Would you address for us our ability to pull those items that must be taken care of by reasonable and productive businesses and/or our cities that allow us to continue to operate, paying those bills that must be paid? Can you address those, sirs?
As far as the operational part of the city, the continuing resolution allows us to continue with the current budget we have. What will be complicated is the year-end close process, as well as any projects outside of normal day-to-day type operations that would have to be put on hold. Those can be approved as, you know, piecemeal. We can pull them out and approve them on an individual basis. That does create more work for staff on the back end, putting all of those entries into the budget system just because of how the actual financial software operates.
And any annual contracts wouldn't be able to be paid either.
Annual, under the continuing resolution?
No, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Because they're not, there's no appropriations form.
I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't hear your question.
So I was asking, under the continuing resolution, contracts can't be paid, or annual contracts?
Right. And that's the same with the awarded contracts. For the roads projects, I'll probably, probably have to pull them, because we have at least four awards for Gateway, Gateway is on the list for projects on the next session, but that award would occur in July, so it'd have to be in the next year's budget, 1617. And then if we don't have a budget, then we don't have the appropriations.
Was Mike going to be gone all of July?
Yeah.
I thought it was the whole month, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry if you didn't hear me, yes.
But we could, could we not get it, if he wants to call in, get it out to him and post it, and then do it on the, we'd have time to do it on the next council, not the sixth, the following one, right? I mean, I know that's still going into the new one, I'm just asking if that would work.
It would work if the, if he were to call in, like on the 20th, is that what you're looking?
I'm thinking that's the one, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think that's the soonest.
Providing I have a location posted with the agenda, and he has the agenda posted at that location.
Right.
Mr. Cox, could you text him and see if he could do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
What if we?
20th.
What if we passed a budget tonight, and then first meeting in August, we have as a discussion item to make amendments to the budget? Then they can have any input they want in terms of changing the budget at that point.
You can amend the budget.
Can you line item the things that you absolutely have to have?
That's what we asked them, if they could do that. What does the rest of the council feel about that?
Yeah, I don't know how that works. I mean, is it possible for us to pass specific lines of the budget tonight? I don't know how you do that.
And that's what we're saying, we can, it creates a lot of work on the back end, just because of how the financial system is, how we enter it in and track it. They each have to be in separate budget levels. I'm probably going deeper than I need to as far as how it is entered into the system and tracked, but it becomes a little cumbersome.
Me, I'm sensitive to their desire to want to be here, but I'm also sensitive to the need for a budget.
I think for me, it's, and again, I understand the need to be here, it's a living, breathing document, we can change a budget at any time. I think we can bring it back to ask some questions and adjust it when they're back, only because we did ask staff to go forward and make cuts so we could approve it.
Yeah.
And so I think it would be fair to do that, but to also know that we're going to bring it back when they're back to go through some stuff that we have questions on, that we don't have answers to, or that they still need answers to. And we may have to adjust our sales a little bit as we go, but we do that anyway, because it's a living, breathing document. That's the only thing I can think of that would keep it from, because the errors on the back end, or the time on the back end, to me says, I'm going to have more room for error, because we could miss, or whatever. And we've already been subject to what happens when somebody misses something, and making large cuts because of that, so I'm not a big fan. If we've got annual contracts, and we can't hold up the awarded contracts either, because we're under obligation. That's my other fear on that one.
Well, that was why I was asking, can we approve those things? And I don't know, I'm not trying to say staff doesn't have enough to do and doesn't need to do it twice, but equally...
It's hard because it's hard.
They want to be here, they want to be here, they want to be able to participate. I understand that. And I think that we need to do everything we can to make that. If we put it back on to the 20th, that still gives you time to do those things? I mean, yeah, no, whatever is that, the seventh and?
Six.
The sixth and the?
Twenty.
20th. Does that still give you time to do that?
The agenda for the sixth will be posted tomorrow. I'm not sure staff would have time to prepare the documents.
No, I'm talking about preparing it for the 20th.
But the 20th, that would be a call on this, on administration.
Prepare what documents?
If they piecemeal sections.
We could approve it at that point, right?
That's what I'm asking. If we hold off the approval for the 20th?
Oh, okay.
That way Mike can call in, and Eddie will be here. Is that correct?
Well, there's time to get that on the agenda, yes, but the impact would be on finance.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Finance and those contracts we have on the next agenda as well. I mean, we could just...
I'm in favor of just passing the budget tonight, and then we can amend the budget later. I, I mean, I know they want to be here, but, I mean, budget's a pretty big deal, we kind of need to do this, so.
Well, they anticipated, like we did, that we would all, not, we would, that we would approve it at the last meeting, and the plans were already made and could not be changed. I am, you know, I understand that, too. I just think there is such significant changes in the budget that, and Stan Rittora asked those items to be asked, because he was not going to be able to be here, and I passed them on to you, to staff, if they could address those issues. And I had some questions I wanted addressed equally, some of them were the same as Dr. Rittora's, but I'm just saying, I don't know how long it's going to take, I don't know the impact, and that's why I'm saying if we can't just approve those contracts, I want those contracts to go out, we need to have them go out, I understand that. We could approve those contracts on the, on the, next week, on the sixth, saying that the budget is coming from the 2000, and potential budget from the 2000, from January, when, next year, we can't do that?
Well, they're substantial, there's substantial amounts, these contracts, these aren't just 20,000, 30,000.
Well, yeah.
If you total them all up, and they're in the millions of dollars, so.
Well, I understand, but whether they're a million dollars, or they're $2.50, is the amount of moving those dollars any more significant on staff's time in it and work to do that?
Well, I wouldn't want to award a contract if I didn't have the money appropriated in a budget to award the contract.
Well, that's why we want to appropriate the money, that's what we're asking, if we can do that on an individual basis.
But the appropriations would rightly come out of the revenues for next year.
So I don't, I mean, I'm still having a hard time seeing why we'd not pass a budget tonight and just amend it later. I mean, essentially, you know, if they don't like the budget as is, they've already got a no vote by being absent. If they are in favor of this budget, then, I mean, it only matters if one of us three disagrees at this point. Unless they have changes that they would like to see made, suggestions, which we could just amend at the next meeting when they're available. I mean, I don't want to seem heartless here, but, I mean, I've missed meetings, too. In a sense, it doesn't always matter that everybody's here if there's enough votes to pass something, because even if both of them said no, and all three of us said yes, it would still pass tonight, so, even if they were here, so, I don't know. I'm in favor of just going, moving forward tonight.
And if we don't pass it tonight, and we do piecemeal, that's no different than passing it and then amending it on the 20th, to me.
Well, it is different.
I mean, it is different, but it's still going to be the same.
It gives the staff the ability to move forward right now with the current.
Right, exactly, because then we don't have to piecemeal it so much, and then if we need to modify it on the 20th, then we can modify it. Or is it questions, I guess? But to me, it kind of makes sense. Either way, it's still doing the same thing in my mind, because we're still trying to get to the same place, which is make sure the annual contracts play, paid, make sure the awarded contracts are paid, make sure...
Make sure the police can hire their two transport officers.
Right, because we've got to have that, because now the jail is closed, you know, so we need to make sure, and we ask staff to make cuts, and they're prepared to do that, and I think we need to honor that as well. So, to me, that needs to happen. And then if, if we have a topic, if we know what those problem areas are, at least, then we kind of have an idea of what we're going to be looking at on the 20th. But going forward, I would say pass it and then amend it as needed in that discussion.
In order for this to happen, all three of us have to vote in favor of it, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Do you want me to go?
Please, so they can see. You public, thank you, we appreciate you being there, so we want you to be able to hear Mr. Cox's question.
So I heard what staff said, that it would be harder on them. Can you pass a budget and eliminate certain line items that you have concerns over, but pass the general budget, so, versus doing it the other way around, just doing particular line items? You know, I'm going to pass the whole thing, but we want to hold this out, this out, this out, and this out. Would that work as an alternative, rather than let's just pass this, and this, and this?
Yeah, that would make more sense, an inclusive budget rather than an exclusive budget.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
You have questions about certain decisions staff have given you, can you just back those out and then add them in at a later date?
Is that doing the same thing, only backwards?
That's what I was trying to say, it's amended.
Well, to the extent that we've satisfied the need for reductions, because if you back stuff out and leave it in the budget, then we wouldn't be where we need to be as far as the reduced amount of the budgets. See, at the last, at the last budget hearing, council had given staff direction?
Right.
To come up with $220,000 worth of cuts, and staff has done that. And so I'm not sure exactly how you come back and say, well, we really don't want this cut. I mean, I assume that's what you're saying, we don't want this cut, or we don't want that cut. But if you get me below, if you get me back to something less than $220,000, or 220,000, then I haven't satisfied the council's direction from the last budget hearing.
Let's go through your process, and we can decide.
Yeah, let's just go through it.
When it comes time. I'd like, I have a lot of questions, and I, as I referred to, Dr. Rittora had some questions that he wanted. Let's go through the process. I'm sorry if I'm going to ask you later on to do the same thing again, but golly gee, that's who we are. So I know that is not what you all desire, but let's go through the process.
All right, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, as you remember from the last budget hearing, the council had directed staff to make $220,000 worth of cuts. Staff, in fact, went back to the departments, and we looked at other areas of the budget that could be cut, and we, in fact, made more than the requested $220,000 worth of cuts. And for a, for a, the actual overview of those cuts, I'll turn it over to our finance director.
Thank you.
See if we get PowerPoint up. Okay, this is the sheet we brought to you, or the table we brought to you last time we met on the budget. This is the one that showed if we, a cash balance impact of a negative 800,000, if we took out the one-time expenditures, that brought us down to the 219, that we were asked to cut, so we could cover the ongoing costs. This is an updated imposed additional impacts sheet. This shows the negative 819, that's in, as proposed in the budget. One of the line items was a revenue increase for a grant fund, the expenditure decrease of 251,000, which left us with a subtotal starting at 543,000. Taking out the two one-time-only charges, brought us down to the bolded, the number in bold and outline there of 56,000. So our operational budget is a positive 56,000 at the end of the year. Add that to the 1.6 million we anticipate in a fund balance, and that's where we'll This was a list of the proposed adjustments in the different areas, city manager reduction, city clerk, finance. You see in public safety where the revenue increase is located, at the 24,000. Anyway, totaling 275,000, which was 55 over our target of 220.
Are you going to take questions as we're going along?
Yeah, more than happy to.
Could you explain those, and how they happened, how they were, like, the first one? Reallocation salaries to transit, the 13208, how is that being done, and what is?
Sure, that's a shift in the time charge of the city manager, about 5%. We reallocated to the transit, as he is over the transit department and oversees some of the operations there. Most of these were, we sent out the request to the departments, and they returned with what their recommended reductions were. So city clerk came back with the 2800 for reducing the printing and reproduction line item.
How does, how does, and I'm not trying to be difficult here, so help me understand, how does reallocating $13,208 to another fund reduce the budget?
That's an enterprise account, it's, is, it is not funded by the general fund at all, it's funded by TDA and FTA.
Thank you.
Would you like me to go line by line?
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you.
As much as I can answer it, I will.
Thank you.
Finance, we had $9,000 in reduction. We usually, I don't want to say pad, but we have a little room in our, in some of our line items. They fluctuate year to year, how much we come in and spend on bank service fees, that depends on how many transactions we have. The training, we were able to reduce. Audit services are the same, for some of the reports, we need for our CAFR, those come in and vary year to year, so we believe we can reduce by 9,000 there.
Okay, the bank fees, how does one reduce bank fees?
Like I said, our banking fees, a lot of times, are based on transaction numbers, and we anticipate a lower transaction number in next year.
So instead of, you're just doing it in bigger batches, so you have less going through, because it's?
Exactly. As much as we can, yeah, so we can reduce that amount.
Makes sense.
Oh, we maybe need to bank somewhere else if we're getting that kind of charges, I'm being facetious here.
Right.
It does seem like, if we can save $9,000 by doing it three times a month instead of every day.
Well, we look, we have the armored truck that comes pretty much every day, we're looking at how we can reduce that, so they only have to come a couple of times a week by processing the checks here. It's a little bit of an upfront cost, but in the long run, saves us money. So we're always looking at those kind of transactions, how we can adjust them to get the best bang for our buck. Advertising and promotion, this, we reduced the 10,000, as the RACVB said they would not be asking for any money for the Petroglyft Festival this year. Non-departmental, we had a line item of 1650 for contingencies when items pop up. It wasn't a lot of money, and we decided we'll just cut it out, and if we need something, we'll be coming back to council, and hopefully we don't need it. Yeah, public safety is probably better coming from the chief.
In looking over the budget, we had allocated expenditure item of 55,728 in our office of traffic safety grant. That number was wrong, it needed to be reduced from 69,000 to 23,000, which is residual grant funding from FY16, because the way the state does its budget, it overlaps ours. So we have about 23,000 that's left for expenditure for next year. And looking at the revenue line item, it was zero, there was none, so we increased that to 24,000. We increased the SRO contract by 4217, that's the increase of the second officer, the school district's actually paying more money next year towards that contract, which was approved by city council a couple of council meetings ago. Reduced the OHV, for whatever reason, that was put back in the budget as an expenditure, and there is no expenditure, because we don't have a grant yet. So that was removed with a $92,000 saving. The 4550 was a reduction in Prop 172, the half-cent public safety sales tax we get every year. That represents us reducing purchasing from three vehicles down to two. But we also came up with a...
Sorry, the 44,500?
The 44,500, it was actually, that money was set aside to purchase three vehicles, so now we're just down to two.
Okay, gotcha.
What we've decided is that we're now going to refurbish four of our old Crown Victorias, and I think we can get four done for the price of two new cars. So we're looking at, they're going to go through, and they strip it, repaint it, put new motor, new tranny, rebuild the rear end, they completely refurbished the whole thing. So I think we're going to get, you know, four fully refurbished vehicles in lieu of three brand-new ones. And then reduced K-9 by...
72.
It should be, yeah, by 2800. We don't have a K-9 officer yet, we do, we are applying for, we do have the money in the budget to buy a K-9 and train, but there's a program out of Texas that we're, we've applied for, so we can get the dog for free, so we're waiting to get a result on that grant. I do anticipate selecting a K-9 officer sometime within the first three months of FY17. So that reduced my budget, either through increase in revenues or reduction in expenditures of 119,723, or 735.
What is OTS?
Officer Traffic Safety.
Traffic Safety, okay.
Yeah, we got a grant at the end of 2015, and the grants run from October 1st until September 30th. And so we always have, we always have money that's left over at the end of the fiscal year that we budget, we move forward for the next year, and we're looking at, we have about 24,000 left on the grant, not 69,000, which was actually budgeted.
Okay. So we're counting the rollover, the 24,000 rollover grant as revenue, basically?
Expenditure and revenue, yeah, it exits itself out.
Okay.
It balances out. Because the expenditures that we had in FY16 will be reimbursed to us as revenue for FY16.
Oh, it's a reimbursement grant?
Right, it's a reimbursement grant.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we get 100,000.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, we get 100,000, we spent 70,000 hypothetically in FY16, we have 30,000 to spend in FY17, just because of the way that the state does its budget. Makes it a little confusing at times, because you have grants that run two of our budget cycles.
Yeah.
But it's just what happens.
The, sorry to backtrack a little bit, the 55,708, what was that again? The reduced, is that part of what you were saying?
Correct, yeah. What happened was, is that when somebody in finance came back through and overestimated what we had left over in the OTS grant for FY17, but didn't back it up on the revenue. In other words, I had a 69,000 expenditure with zero revenue backing it up.
Oh, okay, so it was like a double hit?
Yeah, it was a double hit, it was 69,000 that I was supposedly supposed to spend, but there was zero revenue backing it up, because it's a reimbursement grant.
Right.
When actually it should be 24 and 24.
Okay.
So when you raise the revenue 24,000, like it should be, and you decrease the expenditure to 24, those zero out, but you end up with the savings in the budget.
All right, it's been a long day, but I'm with you now.
Yeah. It's a little confusing, but you just got to think of it as a scale, and all has to equal out on the reimbursement grants.
Yeah.
What goes out, comes back.
That's all for me on that, thank you, sir. We're all ready.
That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
The next item is the planning services reduction. So we had a savings there of 57,000. Planning commission, reduced dues and publications by $350. Parks and Recreation, those came from a...
Can we go back, and where were the planning services reduction?
Sure.
No, I just wanted to know what the...
The planning services reduction, that's the, we're not renewing the city planner's contract. And there were various factors that led to that decision, it wasn't really an easy decision, but from a practical standpoint, we just haven't seen the activity or workload to justify a full-time planner, that's actually been occurring, it's plateaued now, but it's been occurring for at least the last 10 years. I think our peak was prior to 2006, as far as planning activity. And then in terms of, from the fiscal standpoint, that would be a continuing savings, year after year, of this particular amount of money. And the, then from a policy standpoint, I know this council had asked that when the, when, when there was a particular... when there was a, a particular ability to eliminate the contract employees, that was something I know that this council had asked for us to look into. And, and there's been two prior that have already been eliminated.
How does that affect the ability of the planning commission to continue to operate?
Well, that won't, uh, that shouldn't have, uh, it should have very limited effect. Uh, the, the reason is, is there's various ways of approaching this. I know I have the, the article from the city of Lemoore just three years ago. They, uh, they eliminated their entire planning staff. There were three individuals. They did it by virtue of, uh, a consulting firm that took over and that'd be my, uh, there's, there's at least five ways of approaching this. One is through a consultant, which would be on call and as needed. And you could couple that consultant on call and as needed with a, um, part-time planning tech that would work, um, uh, on a, that, that would actually take care of the daily activities, that sort of thing. The consultant would be available for, uh, the projects that required, uh, more professional stature and that would also attend the, uh, monthly planning commission meetings. You could also, uh, instead of having a consultant, you could have senior staff with, that could operate with a part-time planning technician. And you could, uh, another approach would be having, actually sending out an RFP for a part-time planner that could work part-time. Fourth approach would be a consultant, but limit his scope of services and, and then supplement with a part-time planning technician. And then a fifth approach is, uh, I haven't done this, but if there are other cities that also feel that they're actually, uh, have a planner onboard, employed, but they don't feel like they're actually getting full benefit, perhaps we could share planning services with another city nearby. Or the county, in fact.
Are we, um, in, in all of those scenarios, are we looking at going back to a full community development? Because that was something I know that I had, had mentioned with a planning tech, but utilizing him double duty.
Don't have the money at this time to be, because you're probably, what you're talking about is the code calls for a community development director.
I don't want a director?
No, I understand.
Okay.
But there, we just don't have the money at this time.
So we couldn't use a planning tech and cross-train like we do most of our other staff?
Or we can use a planning tech for other things.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, it's put it under and have him help economic development so that we get two for the price of one, so that they're cross-trained.
Sure, depending on the activity level, sure, certainly.
Because we're going to need it, but it's a heck of a lot cheaper and then we're, we're killing two birds with one stone, so to speak.
So we would add that part-time planner to economic development?
Right. We could either think of a convenient title or we could use the other duties as, as directed. But yes, no, we could use that part-timer in different areas.
And that would give us somebody...
That would give us another body in economic development to help that department grow, which we need, but cover our planning at the same time.
And it's a relatively good fit because the old community development department was economic development, development services and planning, as well as building.
Okay. All right, what about the, uh, and the, the reduced dues and publications? Okay, I can see that. Parks and Rec.
Those came from a multitude, multitude of different accounts, so I'll let Mr. Patton explain that.
Yes.
I can hear you.
We can hear you.
That was pretty, it was pretty simple for me. Just, it came from, from the parks side, basically, because recreation, you cut recreation, you cut the revenues, you know, we've been through that before. So we didn't want to really hit the recreation side, um, because there's no real savings there. But, uh, it comes from the park side and it makes most sense because, and not to, not to use this word again, cushion, but on the park side, how we budget is by historical, previous budgets or, or actually hard, hard numbers of what we actually spent in previous years. So, um, there's a wide range because in, in the park side of things, it changes, could change drastically from year to year. So we try to account for the, the worst-case scenario if possible. This current budget is less than the worst-case scenario, but with these cuts, it's minimal spread across really all the different accounts in the, in the park side. It gives us a little less cushion for the, I guess we'll just call it a bad year or a more expensive year for, for fixing and things like that. But, uh, that's basically where it came from.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions on that?
And the last item is Public Works. We reallocated about 10% of the city engineer's time to wastewater to work on the new wastewater plant.
Well, and not only the new wastewater plant, but he actually oversees the drawings that are prepared for the rehab projects for the sanitary sewer lines. And we noticed in the budget, none of his time had been allocated to wastewater.
Okay. I, uh, I don't want to ask questions about individuals, so I'm going to ask questions about the job. Is that relatively fair to do, the process? I'm just thinking, I haven't missed, I don't think, any planning commission meetings in the whole time I've been here. And it seems like they're always busy, always doing things. I know that the, the, the general plan was updated, so it isn't ready to be updated again. But I see these people coming in seeking okays to do the work that they're doing, those two apartment complexes. Is that, is that where you are recently, Commissioner Cox? And I guess I'm wondering, how are those going to be done? I'm not saying that they can't be, but I don't want to do anything that inhibits that economic development that those new projects are going to give to us.
There shouldn't be any, I don't think there should be any issue. I mean, I know that you've had, you still have a staffer that was a former, uh, uh, planning director, as I recall. And myself, I served as development services engineer for the city of Fresno, perhaps one of the busiest periods of time. So I'm very familiar with that, uh, process. I co-chaired the development review committee for the city of Fresno for three years and preparing, uh, we were, we were looking at usually three track maps per, uh, for, per council meeting and per planning commission meeting. And we're talking about 100 to 400 lot maps every time that they're in. Uh, you supervised a, uh, a group of 19 individuals that handled the rezones, the site plans, the variances. Then another group that handled parcel maps and the, uh, lot, the lot line adjustments and the records of surveys. And then a group that just handled the, uh, track map. So I don't really see any slowdown because, like I said, as, as far as technical support at a professional level, we'll, uh, we would, uh, at the very, I mean, one of the options is bringing on a, uh, you know, consultant. We happen to have, in fact, working for us on, uh, different projects, the same firm that Lemoore retained to cut their planning costs by two-thirds. And the, uh, yeah, and, and the day-to-day, as far as, uh, the, the daily communications would be handled by the part-time person.
I'm not questioning the fact that you can't do that, sir. I'm just wondering how many hours in a given day you can work and accomplish at the level that's needed. And if you think you can do that, not my job to tell you you can't.
Well, with the, uh, with, you know, with bringing on a, uh, you know, a consultant or utilizing senior staff, I think that, uh, particularly with the, the activity we have as far as development, I'm talking about development activity. Because I don't see, think we've seen a new track map. We've seen someone take over an existing track map up on College Heights, but we haven't seen an actual new track map in almost 10 years.
Please. Say, I think I saw three just recently, but maybe they weren't an official track map, so I'm hoping...
Well, those were maps that have been taken over by Earl Holmes out of Bakersfield, but they're, the remainder of what used to be the Horton.
And, and the process that, on the, on the triangle, that, but you're, you're more involved than I, please.
Well, I, we're showing a savings of 57,253. I guess the question that I have is if you're talking about two other individuals, whether it's a consulting firm that's on call or somebody to handle the day-to-day counter stuff. If you're repositioning them someplace else, that money still has to come from somewhere. Does that not affect the budget in another area? And is the 57 a true savings when you're talking about now hiring a consultant and then having somebody here for the day-to-day stuff at the counter?
Yeah, this, the 57,000 is the net after we took care of covering the cost of a part-timer as well as contract with a planning service consultant.
Okay.
Well, you did what we asked you to do. There's no doubt about that.
And then some.
Yeah, and then 55,000 more.
I have a question because we skipped one and, and it's in the IT because that's what we skipped. It's pretty self-explanatory. I am only worried about the, the backbone switch. We do not need it. I know it's redundant, but that makes a whole different world than tech speak.
Right, and I, and I don't know tech speak as well either, but, uh, the IT supervisor assured me that, well, if something happens, we'll come back to council, but he believes...
Oh, joy.
He believes it can last another year.
Don't break anything. All right, as long as we're good, that was my question.
So that's just essentially not purchasing a new backbone switch is what that is? Okay. What is AS400 maintenance?
The AS400 is what our current financial system lives on.
Oh, right, okay.
We don't feel the need to really continue maintenance. We're going to have to run dual systems for a while as we set up the HR module, the community development module.
Okay.
But we just don't anticipate a need for the maintenance because as soon as that's done, we, we dump everything into a SQL server and, and we no longer maintain the AS400.
Okay. So I, I have no problem with, um, with utilizing a consultant for the, the, the planning services. The one question I do have is, um, how often, I, I guess, I, I'm, I'm just kind of wondering how well that, that works in, in practice? You know, in, in, in theory, that, that makes sense in my mind, but, um, if, if we, on the council or for, for planning commissioners, have questions, can they simply just call them up and, and discuss issues over the phone with...
Typically, that's the way it works. And, uh, even as recent as 10 years ago, I'd say that that, that's a legitimate question. But in these days, the way we can scan large documents as far as the applica, uh, applications and send them and they can do their reviews, it's, um, it's much more, it's much more doable now.
Okay.
You can be looking at the same documents in real time and discussing them.
Yeah, okay. But yeah, as far as the, the counter, we're, we're still fully staffed behind the counter, correct?
That's correct.
So that's not going to impact, I think, um, the citizens of Ridgecrest as much. I mean, they're, they're the ones that have to interface with people coming in on a daily basis, right? So is, is there a city planner currently? Does he, um, does he man the counter at all or is...
He's called up if there's a specific issue.
Okay.
But many of the issues, such as zoning, uh, the, uh, the ladies behind the counter, they, they have full access to zoning maps and parcel information. It'd only be if there's a particular issue regarding zoning ordinance or if there wasn't a correct zoning, they might ask what the process is to go through a rezone process. But, um, they're pretty versed in that too, but if they want specific information or an application, uh, the planner might be called up. Right now, as you may or may not know, there is an intern that's working planning. I know he's handling a lot of those activities right now.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, I'm, I'm actually pretty impressed with the, the cuts that you've made. We asked for 220. You, you dug in, you, you found even more cuts and, um, I mean, for the most part, I think these are very reasonable cuts and they don't necessarily really hurt at all. So that's, that's good news for me, so.
I feel the same way. I, I know we really didn't seem to have enough for the expertise in the full-time planning, so it, it works to bring in a tech and, like I said, double duty. Some of the others, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to find it because when I saw public safety, I'm like, uh, but it makes sense. Yeah, I, I appreciate it. I appreciate staff digging in because again, we're not going to be able to cut our way to success, but at least we can get this down to bite-sized pieces as we work on some other stuff and, and make it work. So thank you. I'm good.
I'd like us to go through Dr. Rittor's questions. Do you mind going through those if we, do you want to read them off? Do you want me to read them off? How do you want to do that, please?
Well, if you have it, if you could read it, you'll respond.
I do. We all got a copy of it, I believe, an email. It starts off by saying, "The yearly budget review is the only time we do an in-depth look at the budget. Each year, we struggle to attempt to make the revenue cover the expenses. This is getting harder and harder as years go by. Revenue is going down. Expenses are going up. I see no effort to do any meaningful future planning. Each year, each year, we lean more heavily on the exterior funds to shore up the meager general fund revenue. We also transfer a significant amount of employee salaries into exterior funds. I appreciate the fact that the general fund is in serious trouble. We cannot continue year after year to relying on transfers from external funds. The general fund needs to rely on itself. The only way this is going to happen is some dedicated planning. The transfers of funds from the exterior funds give a false sense of general fund health and it is not sustainable. If the larger issue of multi-year budget planning cannot be addressed in the current budget development, I suggest that one of the city committees take a proactive role in future revenue development. We cannot continue on this current mode much longer." Would you like, that's a statement he made, it wasn't a question. Would, do you have anything you all would like to say?
Well, I kind of found that I had to kind of, uh, dig to find the questions. A lot of this was, seemed to me to be commentary as opposed to...
The first thing is commentary.
As far as questions. But as far as the, uh, the revenues, Dr. Rittor is correctly, is, is absolutely correct. And what staff has been doing over the last, uh, particularly the last couple of months is we're looking at different ways of, um, adding to our revenues and they're, and, and I don't mean in a typical sense. One is revisiting the whole issue of the PILT, the Payment and Loan Tax. I've gotten some, I've, uh, done some research on that and I've found some information. And I think that to some degree I've been mis-informed by our, uh, our, our legislature, legislator, I guess you should say, or congressman. And because I think that that's something that we need to, to, and we're in the process of doing that, is preparing information that shows exactly for similar-sized cities and even larger-sized cities, because it can be proportionalized. But what they receive for PILT, uh, for their support of other mater, uh, other military facilities. And this is not just in California, but it's, it's nationwide. And the, I think that when we, when we put this to, we want to put this together and then bring this to the congressman as far as our, uh, as, as far as our case. I don't want to go to the congressman and present an idea that, uh, we, we just want money, we just want money. Rather, I'd like to show, well, there's a whole lot of other communities that actually receive PILT. This is where they're located. This is why they receive PILT. And this is why we feel that particularly in our situation right now, uh, we really want, we really ask for you to, uh, to, uh, try and pass legislation for us to be able to receive that PILT. And then with regard to the property tax, you, you remember seeing in some of the earlier budget hearings, the slides that indicated we get five cents on the dollar? There's something wrong with that. So I've already got a file started as far as where we can go and how we can reverse this because there's something, there's just something that's not right about that. I actually believe it has to do with the, uh, the RDA that was created a long time ago and the series of agreements. But I'm still looking for the documents that'll put me on the right path, uh, in that particular direction. And then there's also a series of, uh, instead of, uh, well, there is another revenue, uh, that, that source that we know that's going to be coming in. And it's, uh, the fact that Walmart won't be that much of a bump as far as sales tax when they open because a lot of it's food. But at the same time though, that means there are going to be two retailers. One's already signed up, it's going to be moving in. One's already signed up, it's going to be moving in next spring to the old Walmart building. And so with two new retailers, that should, that should help us in the way of sales tax. And potentially, there'll be a third because there was a second that wanted to actually occupy with the person that signed up, but they had, they had a, they had a right of approval for the other person that, party that wanted to move in, and because they sold similar things, they bumped someone that seriously wants to be in town. So I know our economic development manager is looking for a home for that other, you know, business as well. And then at the same time, I believe there was an interest of, at one of the recent conferences that Gary went to for other types of establishments that wanted to come to town. And then in the way of cost savings though, we're looking at areas such as agreements that we've had with other agencies that we think that we're not receiving the benefit of, that we think that will be moving forward. That will be savings, it'll be on the expense side as opposed to the revenue side. And those are things that we're looking at that we think will be, that are very positive both in the revenue and expenditure side. And then as the council knows, we are, our consultant will be, and I believe there are some one-on-ones prior to that, but our consultant for the renewal of the Mezorel will be making his presentation on the, at the July 20 meeting, and that'll actually get that, you know, up and running as far as the proposed renewal of the Mezorel.
Some of the things you hit on were some of the things in the statement I was going to read, so I guess we're working somewhat off the same ticket, so thank you. I'm going to finish reading Dr. Rittor's.
Sure.
And if you don't, if you all don't mind. I finally got some time to look at the administrative overhead calculation chart given out by Ty. The chart claims $2.7 million for general government expenditures. Page 21 of the budget gives $2.0 million of expenditures. It is not obvious that the $2 million satisfies the two tasks for administrative overhead. The non-debt category has never been defined as far as I can remember. MIS is a significant expense. City Hall is also a large expense. The ISF funds we use to make the budget awkward, but it also spread the expenses of MIS and City Hall in a more appropriate manner. I do not recall a definition given for administrative overhead expense. Thank you, Ty.
Yeah, no problem. Starting off at the top there, I pulled up the screen here for the overhead calculation that was distributed last meeting. The $2.7 million white includes not just general government, but also the Public Works Administration and Engineering, as those are spread out among the enterprise funds for the work that they do. So that's the difference in the number there. Let's see, what else is? The non-departmental, that is pretty much any expenditure that doesn't have a home. If you have, like the postage meter. It doesn't belong to a specific department, nor can it be charged to a specific department. So we put it in non-departmental because the whole city uses that. It's expenditures like that, that live within the non-departmental. Yes, we used to have different internal service funds. This is trying to do the same thing as those internal service funds, is spread out the cost of administration amongst all the different funding sources that apply.
But show it directly and make it more transparent. One of the problems with the ISF funds was, and I know Dr. Rittor doesn't like to see all these transfers in and transfers out, and that's exactly what was occurring with the ISF funds. Very hard to track.
And I mean, the last thing, administrative overhead, what is that? Well, that's everything that you can't tie down to a specific department. We have a city manager, he's not assigned to a specific department. It's an overall umbrella for the operations of the city. I don't know, is there anything more you'd like me to say?
I think you answered all of his questions, or at least addressed some of the issues he brought up because some of them, as you say, were opinion and not necessarily answerable.
Right.
Okay. He said, "I requested some time ago an allocation chart for the transfers into Fund 110. It appears to be heavily loaded towards the gas tax fund, transit fund, and wastewater fund. There has been, there has, has to be an allocation chart that indicates how the numbers were generated. This may very well be a logical rationale for all the allocated numbers. If so, why has not the city staff shared it?" The council may, oh, that was it. And you are doing that now.
Yeah, after the last meeting, after he requested it, we just, it wasn't as high on my priority list as finding the cuts and getting the budget prepared.
Appreciate that.
So I never got a chance to get this out to him. I have it right here. It's following the same plan as the overhead, with the exception of this does charge the general fund because that is part of the insurance. And you can see it is not heavily weighted towards gas tax, TDA, or wastewater. The bulk is coming from the general fund, almost $800,000, which is the additional $400,000 we're talking about to get our reserve account up to the appropriate level.
Okay, and his last, the wastewater budget given on page 29 of the proposed budget. This is the fund that has multiple accounting, okay, rather than call them mistakes, when you admitted some were added rather than subtracted.
Yeah, the actual transfers out were added in instead of taken out. I have corrected that. That doesn't change the budget as far as the yearly operational budget, and that chart will be corrected when the actual final budget document goes out. I do have copies now with that correction. If you want them, I can go ahead and pass those down, but like I said, it doesn't change the operational budget.
Would you be able to make sure Dr. Rittor gets a copy of these things that answer his questions? I don't intend to give him any special action that others didn't, except he's been so faithful being at our meetings when he said he couldn't be here. I felt like we owed him the respect to ask his questions, so my apologies if others feel that they did not get that same respect.
Yeah, we'll send that out to him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. So where are we now? I would like to say a couple of things and help me understand. If it sounds like criticism, so be it, it is not meant to be, but I feel like we're revenue-challenged. We have made all the cuts we could possibly make. I would encourage the budget, the finance committee to begin to help work with our staff to find dollars. I don't think there's any more cuts that can reasonably be done. I wish that they had been able to get started last year when it was first brought up. Let's have council review it, and I'm glad we finally were able to accomplish that, but it offered us no benefit. Their review, their look at, their ideas, I'm not saying they would have come up with anything, any different than what you had, but I'm so concerned that we continue every year, last year being my first budget, and I know both of you had budgets before that, but it always, nothing ever goes up. Revenue never goes up, I mean, sorry, revenue, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Revenue doesn't go up and expenditures continue to increase. I want us to take, look at, and I would like staff to come up with, in your spare time for the budget, committee, the finance committee, to go over the next five years. Estimate the money that you think you are going to need to operate the next five years, knowing that salaries are going to go up, expenses are going to go up, nothing is going to go down. What do you see in revenue? Is revenue going to continue to drop? Is revenue going to increase significantly? If it is, we're going to have this very same problem next year, trying to cut from another bare bones budget that there clearly is no more money to cut. I, I see you wanted to respond, please.
I was going to say, that's why we retain muni services. They give you those, they give us a, our revenue projections, and we can call them, well, we could call them daily, but we call them periodically just to find out if, how the revenues are tracking during a given year.
Four, five years?
And, no, no.
Yeah, I actually have, yeah, I have a five-year projection. They do it on sales tax, mainly on sales tax. They do have some business license expertise as well, but we use them currently for sales tax. And the nice thing about that is they kind of project out the different categories of where our, you know, our retail market, so we can kind of see what's going. They compare it to California or the Central Valley to give us a kind of a standard of where we should be and which way things are tracking. So we do have some good information on the sales tax side. Of course, TOT, we're going to rely quite a bit on the RACVB and the hotel industry to kind of give us their take on which way TOT is going to go, but there's definitely items we can look at with the finance committee.
It seems, I'm sorry.
And we can use Cosmo as well to give us, they can give us a pretty good indication.
I would like to be able to look at that and begin to use the numbers we have rather than simply saying, "Thank you." And I'm not saying you haven't been, but I haven't seen it, and perhaps it's my lack of experience that I haven't seen that use come back to this community and the council and the city as a whole. I know that there's, if I look at that last Cosmo report, I was so pleased with what I saw, how great things looked, and I look at our budget and I go, "Where did that go? How did we have such a wonderful, positive report?" I remember going through it, our economic outlook last February, and saying, "Things are going to be good this year." What happened? I don't know what happened, and I know some of those things that I had here. I wanted us to look at, and I'm not sure how we do that, like you said, the PILT. We, previous councils gave it up to go to the base and say, "Gee, because we want to support you, we really want you to be there, keep the growth coming here, and we'll give it up." Well, we never got it back, and I want to see some value of that give up. And if we're not getting the value of that give up, then for sure, I want to see it back. And I want to be able to defend that to our customers, our people, our community, that it was worth giving that up. I don't think it was. I don't think we got any business because we decided to say, "We'll be the good guys." Sometimes we need to fight for ourselves more than we do. And I don't blame past councils, they did what they thought best, and I'm sure future councils will say, "Look what they did." But I hope they're honest enough to say, "We did what we thought was best." So when it comes to that, and the same with the sales tax, I mean, the property tax, that money needs to come back to us. There is no reason in my mind that we should stay where we are when everyone else is. And I don't understand why it, how did it come to be that way?
That's what I'm researching.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. Now I'm also going to talk to the public. The dollars you spend here benefit you. The dollars you spend on the internet, for the most part, do not. Nothing is given back to this community. We see monies going out all the time when you go out of town and buy something. If you truly have gone out of town and looked at the dollars that are spent for, let's say, car A and car B, look at what those dollars bring back to this community. If you save $5.80 to go spend it out of town, shame on you. Shame on all of us who allow that. The businesses who don't stand up and say, "Look at me, look what I can do, look at the service I bring, look what I donate to this community. I am, as a business, part of this community." We cannot continue, we cannot continue to say we are going to provide services when we're losing revenue. Not possible. And when someone comes back to us and says, "Well, you used to do, you used to do," I hear, I've heard that so much, and we cannot rely on what we used to do. If we don't have the income we used to have. Now, that's part of us, to make sure we do our job and we make those, that opportunity for additional income here. But it's also your job too, and it's the business's job too, to point out why you need to purchase here, what the benefits thereof. If it can't be done, if you see a car that, and I know I'm being facetious when I say, "You're going to save $2.98," come back here and say, "I researched, I can get this car, this washing machine, this vacuum cleaner." Go back to that business and say, "Will you make up the $2.98?" It is all of our responsibility, not just council, not just businesses, not just the community, to make this a viable organization. I am so fearful that unless we continue to find those monies, we're going to come back next year and the same problem, we're going to say, "Well, now what can we cut? Who's going to go next year? Is next year economic development? Is next year the building department? Is next year public works? There is no more to cut." Unless you all got money hidden away I don't know about, and I don't think you do, I think there's no more to cut. Revenue is the answer. I expect the budget committee, the, I'm calling the budget, the finance committee and staff to find ways, and if any of you've got ways out there, we can make things better, say it, tell us. We can learn from you as well as I hope you learn new ideas and different things that our staff has presented to you. So I don't like, I do not like approving the budget without the other council members here. I have to say that. I understand they all had the opportunity to be here, but they didn't know that we were going to make those, go back to staff and say, "Bring us back a balanced budget." I don't like it. I think we've given them, and I'm sorry, I wish Mike had known that he had to have his item on the agenda beforehand so we could do this online, because he really wanted to be here when he saw some of the kits, because he said, "I have some questions." And I said, "Don't send it to me, send it to staff." And because we hadn't seen this early enough, he didn't, and I know Eddie probably feels the same way, although I haven't talked to him.
He didn't.
And so I don't know. I just, I'm so hoping there's some way, because I know if I don't approve it, I see you two are in favor of it, and I know if I don't approve it, it's going to go down. I don't want to do that to staff, I don't want to do that to our contracts, but is, I just can't, maybe because I don't understand the mechanics of city financing budgets, contracts, that we can't just simply approve those contracts that have to be awarded. We know that they're going to have to be awarded, and we're going to say it's going to come out of a not-yet-approved 2017, 18, no, yeah, 17, 18, 16, 17 budget. If we can't do that, we can't do that, but it seems to me there's got to be a way to do that. Am I wrong?
The better approach is to approve the budget.
Without a budget, we can't approve the contract. Like I said before, we can pull those out, we can tabulate everything and bring it to approve a budget for those specific items, but as I said before, it also creates a lot of work on the backend trying to get the budget incorrectly without double counting and, because I'll have multiple budget levels within the system for each of these individual items. That's where the difficulty comes in.
Well, I think there's a legal issue too from a contractual standpoint. You can't agree to agree. You can't agree that you're, you're going, you can't award an agreement where you're saying you're paying and you really don't have the money, because the money wouldn't be there until the budget's actually approved. And I had mentioned to Ty that if you didn't approve it tonight, I would, I think I'd be forced to pull all of our contracts that we're going to award, because some of them involve federal dollars, because I can't do that without appropriated funds at our level, because it does require matching money. I would just have to wait till the budget would get approved, and if it's I would just have to wait till the budget would get approved, and if it's whipped in August, we may even miss the paving season. It might be, uh, uh, spring of the year before we can actually do the paving.
So, what happens, again, forgive me, but what happens if we approve it, we put it back on the agenda for those budget, for those council members who are not here right now to, to address it?
To amend the budget later?
And then they amend the budget and say, "Hey, we didn't like this."
That, that's...
What do you do then? You've already approved the spending of those things, and I'm not saying they're going to. I'm not saying they're not gonna say, "Don't fund the two police officers." I'm just concerned that, how is that any less, and I'm gonna use the word, inhibiting or destructive to our budget by saying, "We're going to amend it 60 days, 30 days from now"?
Well, if they were, if, if we let contracts, if we were to contract next week, there, those contracts...
Are let?
Uh, yeah, those contracts are let.
Yeah.
So, I...
And I don't believe that's any of the issues that...
I don't think it is either. I don't. That's why I'm saying, can't we just fund those?
I think the only things they would have an issue with is how we're making cuts today, because that's the only thing that's different from the previous meeting.
I agree.
These are cuts, right? So, I mean, if, if we wanted to amend the budget to not include certain cuts, that doesn't do any damage in terms of what happens between now and, you know, the next meeting when they can be here. I mean, we simply, i- if, if we amended the budget to not include a cut, we would simply reallocate money back into the budget that wouldn't be there otherwise. So, it's not gonna do any damage to, to just amend the budget later. I, I don't think they would have a problem with it. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but...
And I do agree with that, because it, once we approve it and it goes forward, if we don't, then yes, we could lose out on some contracts or delay things, which we don't wanna do. Amending it means if they don't like something in here, which is my assumption, same as, as Councilman Sanders, then they're gonna have to cut it from somewhere else, but we know the contracts are safe and done because we've already awarded them, and we need to move forward on those. So, that's my thought process on it.
And, and if they had issues with other items of the budget besides the cuts that we're addressing tonight, they had plenty of opportunity to address that before now. And I, and I, I think it's perfectly reasonable to suspect that they don't have issues with the rest of the budget.
And before I forget, Eddie did ask about calling in, but it was already after hours on Friday, and it had to have been posted, so I explained that process to him, 'cause he wanted to be here as well, so I understand that, but again...
Chris did Mike.
Yeah, so, you know, and it happens. I mean, I, I was at a wedding when we were doing budget in Washington State my first year, so it, it happens.
So, where are we with it, members of the council?
I'm very happy with the budget as it is. I'm very happy with the way staff has, has made cuts. I think these are very reasonable cuts, and, and they satisfy what we requested and more, so I'm, I'm ready to pass the budget tonight.
The, the only things I, I kind of wanna say is, is I wanna touch on what you touched on, Peggy, and that the Finance Committee can go forward and explore things, and, and that's a, that's great in the five-year also. I think we've also talked about what started a few years ago, which was the plan that we worked on, and we got our mission statement and our vision, but we never got any feet in movement underneath the things that need to happen or we wanna see happen, and we need to do that so that we can start planning for that, so that the city has a direction and staff has a direction, and we all kind of have something to look forward to moving forward to see where, not just talk about, but actually start to implement some of the things that we're talking about, that we're trying to do. The other is, is to the public. Again, and it, and it's not just the, the shopping in town, but I hear a lot of, "But it's a rich crest, why would I pay that?" I don't know, why would you pay all the gas money to pay the same price for the same thing out of town when you can get it here for the same or cheaper? You know, you ask for things and we provide them, you wanted staples left open, we kept it open for a year, you still didn't shop and they still had to close. So, we've all gotta do it together. It's not just a, "Well, you gotta fix it." Well, no, we have to do it together. We absolutely have to do it together, or we're gonna be the county, because that's who's gonna have to come in and take over, and we can see how well that's going. And just for you, in the county budget, the federal in lieu of line, their code number is 4135, 'cause I went through and found where they got PILT.
Nice.
Okay? Good, yeah, I'm done with that.
I wanna address PILT too, if I may, just editorialize for a moment. So, I spoke with, I met with Dennis earlier today, and we, we discussed some of those things in detail, and I was very impressed with the progress that, that staff has been making on that and other issues regarding, you know, money coming, coming into the city. I've always held the belief that, you know, raising taxes is, is like the very last thing you do, and, and prior to that meeting earlier today, I was, I was ready to really start talking about honest, honestly, what, what do we have to do? How much do we have to increase to get to where we really need to be, to, to be a healthy operating government? 'Cause right now, we're a skeleton crew, and, and I honestly, I can't believe that, that you guys have done as well as you have for this long, because we've sacrificed, and, and we continue to sacrifice, and you can only sacrifice for so long, and, and before it really just starts to hurt, and you, you just can't keep going. And so, I was very happy to hear about the progress we made. I'm, I'm absolutely in support of trying to get PILT funding, and I think we need to approach it from the perspective of, you know, in the past, we've, we've tried to, you know, make a noble sacrifice and, and say, "We're gonna forego the PILT and, and because we love the base and we love, we're patriotic and, and, and we made that sacrifice." But that was all pre-redevelopment agency money, or pre-redevelopment agency dissolution, I guess. And so, I think it, it might be helpful to educate the, the federal government a little bit as well, to help them understand, "We can no longer make that sacrifice." And, and, and this is something, we still love the federal government, we still love the base, and we still are absolutely patriotic, but we can no longer make that sacrifice. It's just hurting us too much, so we absolutely have to go after the PILT. I think that would be huge, and if, if we can get that, you know, I think that would get us to a level where possibly, I don't know what that would be, but it would get us to a level where we don't have to really look at, at...
Well, we, we were presented that, a piece of paper that explains where, how we get to there and what we have to do.
Yeah.
Ty, did you wanna talk about that?
It's a big gap.
Just a little bit, I mean, we, we were asked what the optimal budget would be, so we went through, and, and keep in mind, this includes both the general fund and the gas tax, our street funding. But we went through the, and kind of looked at what our optimal level on, on employees were, as well as where we should actually be as far as revenue coming in, to do everything we wanna do for this community, and, and this is what we were able to put together. You see, we, we've got about a $9 million shortfall there that we really, to be operating at, at maximum and to be able to, to provide all the services we want for this community, that we're $9 million short.
And just as a reminder, there was also another slide where our Finance Director had, had a, a matrix showing comparable cities and what their budgets were. And I think even this is probably low or mid of what those other cities are in the same size have for their general fund budgets.
I am, this is gonna be a very difficult thing for me to do, because I don't, I don't like what I'm gonna do, and I... But I feel like we have a responsibility to, to do some things, you wanna have to plug your nose and do it, because this is against most of my principles, that all of us decide. All of us have a responsibility. All of us bear the burden and, and share the joy. I'm proud of what staff has done to make those cuts. I am not so concerned about the cuts, I'm more concerned about the direction, and that is part of my concern, that I would have liked to have the opportunity for all of us to talk about that, and I, I... I've said it already, I'm, go ahead, Ty, I know you brought something else up.
I just put it back on the slides for the adjustments, if you need to reference them, you can.
Yeah. I know there's things we have to do, we have to do the contracts. I don't wanna lose that money, I don't wanna lose the savings or be charged more because we have to renegotiate it. I don't wanna lose our police officers, because with the jail closed, we're going to have to deal with that. I just wish there was some way it could be done. It could be accomplished to do those things we must do and still address those things we ought to do. And if you say there isn't, there isn't. I'm gonna have to plug my nose on this one, no doubt. So, what is the action, council?
Do we need to do public comments still? Do we already do that?
We have a, we have a, we, oh, is there any, is there public comment? Please come up.
While you come up, just so you know, I also did some digging over to why on earth does Cal City get 20% for property tax? I really have some answers on that too, and one of them was a, a measure that they did similar to our Measure L for temporary, 'cause we need to get this and, and kind of had the public vote on it, and then managed to keep working that until it became a permanent thing, and I can go into details, but I did find answers on that as well to help us get there. Thank you.
My first question is for the...
Brian, can you identify yourself for the record?
Oh, Brian Cosner. My first question is about the Police Department cuts. According to the chart, that looks like $140,000 cut from the Police Department. I know a lot of it is being explained as it's being covered by grants and things like that, but that's a figure, people are gonna be concerned with that figure. Is there any way we can clarify what, what is the Police Department actually cutting out of the RIF budget that it would have been doing otherwise?
In terms of re, um, things provided to the community, is that what you're...
Right, because that first thing, the Office of Traffic Safety, you made it sound like that was going to be covered by a grant, so that wasn't like actually a cut? So, maybe I wasn't following that?
It, it actually has to do with how the budget was readjusted, some numbers were put in that were on the expenditure, expenditure side greater than they should have been, and that they weren't backed up on the revenue side. So, we saved a lot of money by adjusting it appropriately with the left, 'cause we have like an Office of Traffic Safety grant, it covers two of our budget cycles. In this case, it covers FY16, FY17, 'cause it's state money. So, we have about $24,000 left over from the OTS grant from last year, it'll be expended from July 1st until September 30th this year, in the amount of about $24,000. So, what happened was is that the OTS expenditures, which were $69,000, but budgeted zero, were readjusted to show $24,000 expenditure and then $24,000 revenue, so they balanced out, 'cause it's a reimbursement grant.
Okay. I guess my, my question is brass tacks, are there things that we had fiscal year 15, 16, that we will not have fiscal year 16, 17?
Yes, we will be purchasing one less vehicle.
Okay.
But we did, but we did come up with a plan that we're gonna refurbish...
Refurbish two.
Four of our vehicles...
Four.
Instead of buying three new vehicles, which I think is, is a prudent thing to do.
Uh, my other question would be for Mr. Spear, I think, the two, potentially three new retailers in the old Walmart building? Any name for those, or is that confidential?
I think the ones out there, the one that's already leased it, I mean, I think it's public knowledge, isn't it? I heard it at the barber shop, so, is it public knowledge?
Yeah.
It is?
It's what?
Is it public knowledge?
I don't know what show we were talking about.
I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen it. On the Planning Commission.
I haven't seen it on the Planning Commission, but I know you did.
Pardon me?
Did you see, see it on the Planning Commission agenda?
No, it has not on the, has not been on.
Okay, well, I guess, Brian, you'll have to give me a call, and, and as soon as it's public knowledge, I'll let you know.
Okay. My, I guess my last question is, um, I feel like the number that has been floating around is that we had, the general fund had an $800,000 deficit, and we're only cutting 200 and change. Can you explain the discrepancy there?
I think this slide here will, no, that's not the right slide. Oh, yes, it is. This slide kind of shows you that there's a one-time, there's a one-time payment for permits, it's $200,000, and there is a self-insurance catch-up where the money never really leaves the city, but it's put in a, an off-budget fund that we have to have a certain amount in there to satisfy the state requirements to be in the, the insurance pool. And so, when the council saw that we're talking about one-time money for the, for $600,000 to $800, they'd ask us to come back with cuts for the $200,000, which would be a sustained or continued expenditure.
Okay. And then I, on a personal note, I'm super glad we're trying to get PILT and more property tax revenue. That seems silly that we don't, so, thank you guys.
I didn't hear what you said, can you say that again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just saying, I'm glad that we're going for PILT and more property tax revenue, I think it just seems unfair that we're not getting it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's important that people understand that the $800,000 in debt, red budget, was, was splashed all over, and it was fact, but I think they need to understand that it is not, how do I say that, real money? It is money that is part of the budget, but it isn't...
Gives a false perception.
Yeah, the, the perception is that it, that we were short, and now we can say that we have a balanced budget. Actually, we have $55,000. We're not only balanced, we have a $55,000 surplus. Now, is that anything to be proud of? Heck, no, but it's a whole lot better than being 200 and whatever it was, 97,250, $50,000 overdrawn, and 220, and so I appreciate staff for what they've done, and I appreciate all the departments who took the hits and aren't here crying.
And Madam Mayor, that, that leaves us with a million dollars in our...
Cash balance.
Cash balance.
That's important. Can you tell, now the revenue, the, what is that term?
I know, it is, yeah.
Wait a minute, I know it's a good number, I can't tell you, reserves?
It'll be 650.
The reserve will be an additional, I believe it's about 750...
Okay.
On top of that one million.
Okay, because that is significant, I think. I, I look at what was, happened in the past, and we had virtually none, so I, to have virtually some is pretty important. Okay, well, we've had all our discussion, we've had public comment, is there any other public comment? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve this budget. Don't need to say anything else.
And I will second it.
Mayor Braden?
Yes.
Councilmember Acton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanders?
Aye.
Three in favor, two absent. Motion passed.
And when we, we, when they get back, we can still discuss it?
Yeah, I want it on there, as soon as they get back.
For the 20th or the first meeting in August?
Well, Mike will be, Eddie will be back, Mike will be in, calling in by phone, so if we can have it back on there on the 20th...
Can we do August?
Can we do August? Because the 20th is Measure L.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a pretty hefty meeting.
Okay, I'm, I'm whatever, I'm not trying to tell you how to run the meeting, just if we can get it down there immediately, as soon as possible.
And, and then if, you know, it's not set in stone, I mean, it is, but it isn't, I mean, if we need to amend it at that time or change something, or they're not happy with something, we can do that, but we can still go forward.
This way, Councilmember Maurer also does...
This way, Councilmember Mauer also doesn't have to teleconference in, because he won't be here on the 20th. Yeah. Okay, is there any other discussion, or are we ready to adjourn?
I just want to make one statement. We've, we've worked really hard to increase our, our revenue, not revenue, our reserves. I mean, even though they weren't technically reserves all those years, which I didn't understand, but that's been, that's been a huge battle for like the last three and a half years, and, and it continues to be a battle. And, and I'm just very proud of staff and the council for, for being able to incrementally, each year after year, raise that up a little bit, so that we're in a safe, healthy, fiscally responsible state. So, thank you to everyone.
Yeah, I, and I echo that, because our first council meeting was here, cut 900,000. Oh, by the way, no reserve. And, yeah, I mean, it's not pretty and we don't like it, but at least we're going in the right direction, and that's through the dedication and, and a lot of the, please do a whole lot more with a whole lot less. And, you know, the meetings will continue with staff, but we appreciate it. We know you work hard. We know you do a lot, and we know we ask a lot, and it is so appreciated, because we, we know how that, that goes and how it feels. So let's try to look up from here on out and see if we can't recover some revenue now.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have nothing else to say, except if anybody thought, I got a text saying, "Are you lambasting our businesses?" I am not. I am not. I am one of them. I just want you to, all of us, to stand up and remember the local businesses, because it benefits all of us, and I appreciate every one of them. And let me stay for the last, in case you didn't know, we are sending $30,000 over to Kern River Valley for a nonprofit that was set up, that will be manned by the Exchange Club, the Rotary Club, Kern Valley Chamber of Commerce, Kernville Chamber of Commerce, and Faith Community Church. And they are going to spend the dollars with no restrictions, only that, that you must have a, a local address in the Kern River Valley, and you have a demonstratable need. So that's it. So, thank you to all the businesses, now after I've lambasted you. Thank you to all the businesses and the people. The people, people, people. $30,000. And we still got more coming in today after that, so thank you. Okay, meetings adjourned.